I think we're expected to. If that's the case, I'm going to turn my attention to.
Go ahead, Mary.
I'm trying to get some information.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, when our meeting started, this is our normally scheduled work session for Tuesday, January 3rd. We are in a new space, as you all are aware. We will be having some minor technical issues during the kind of setup of this, so if we have a little lumps in the process, we'll just kind of roll past it and kind of do our best. We're going to go ahead and start off with our first item, is our common core presentation, as is Commander Smith and Advantage Treatment Center Program Director Tyson Berry, and Director for Clinical Services and Contracting Sarah Stangby.
New Space, good morning, everyone. Council Mayor, thanks for having us. We were asked to give a short informational discussion about a valuable resource that exists in our community that maybe some of you might not know as much about, as you would like, Community Corrections and Advantage Treatment Centers, and it's located near the Sheriff's Office. So luckily for me, I have the opportunity to serve on the Community Corrections Board here in town, and also the weekly screening committee meetings. So it's something that I really enjoy. It's a critical component of our criminal justice system. It's lesser known to a lot of us than the jail, or the courts, or the police department of the Sheriff's Office, so hopefully we get something out of this presentation. Rather than me talk about something that I don't know as much as experts do, I have Program Director of Advantage Treatment Centers Tyson Berry, and the Director of Clinical Services and Contracting Sarah Stangby. So Tyson Berry was raised on the Western Slope of Colorado, and has remained an integral contributor to the criminal justice services in the seventh judicial district. Prior to joining Community Corrections, Tyson served over a decade as a probation officer, several years in the Montrose County Sheriff's Office. So he's been around for quite a while since our community became a criminal justice. Tyson's vast knowledge of the offender management division makes him a vital asset. Leadership at ATC Montrose is maintaining a 10% higher success rate as compared to the state average, which I think is a testament to his hard work and staff, and the way he builds his team to serve our community. Also, Sarah Stangby, Sarah's Montrose native, and she mainly did want me to highlight this. Tyson is a Western Slope native like I am. She is Montrose native. She highlighted that as well. She's the Director of Clinical Services and Contracting for ATC. At ATC, she's worked to integrate behavioral health care into justice-involved settings, working to change the landscape of community corrections. Currently, Sarah oversees the entirety of ATC's clinical operations across the state, including the largest intensive residential treatment, IRT, program for justice-involved clients in Colorado, and has worked to integrate effective substance use and sort of treatment into many facets of the criminal justice system. So what we'll do today is we'll have Tyson talk generally about community corrections as it fits into the criminal justice system, and then Sarah will give a talk about the programs and some of the more specific things that ATC or Montrose offers. You have handouts in the packet, but I also have some here, if anyone would like extras. So hang on. Get that?
Morning. Thanks for having me. As Matt was saying, so we're located in the old Montrose County workroom. We've been there since 2013, June 1, 2013, and Community Corrections opened up here in Montrose. Prior to Community Corrections being here, I worked in that facility as a SO and a probation officer. The struggles we had prior to that were our clients were going out to other community corrections programs. Maybe the most, a majority of them went over to the front range. As I'll get into more and I explain about community corrections, that's a challenge when those guys would come back to Montrose. They wouldn't have the services that we currently are able to provide to them. So in the current facility they're at, which we have at Rome, we're busting out the seams, currently it's 70 four feet, and because of the layout of that facility, they have 60 male beds and only 60 male beds. The type of clients that come to the facility are direct sentence clients. Direct sentence is directly being sentenced by the judge to community corrections. Typical sentence is two years. Remember, it could be more, you know, some 10-year sentence. Only up can, by statute, 16 years is the most they take to community corrections. That's the majority of our clients. About 80, 85% of our clients, direct sentence. Typically, those guys have been on probation. They've held probation, sometimes mowed through clients before they come to us. Another type of client that we have are transitioning clients. You can commit as transitioning from DOC for the Department Corrections, back to society. They'll come to us and work the program. Rather than just giving them 25 bucks and bus tickets to go back home, when they leave prison, they come to us and work on stabilization. Another way clients come to the program is condition of parole and condition of probation. So they're out on parole, probation, and they're struggling with those conditions. They come to us for a higher level of supervision. So they give us as an added tool for probation parole officers. We can supervise them a lot more than what they're able to do. So those are the four ways that clients come into our program. All of those clients are screened by community committee. That's part of, that screening community meets every week. It's made up of law enforcement, DOC rem, probations on there, and then citizens from the community review these packets. There's probably about 10 to 14 every week that they do. They do a great job. It takes them several hours to go through these packets. Somebody put a program. Being ATC myself, I don't have a say when they come. This works out really well. We're not big in choosing. More often, I would say no to, this person's a near problem for my staff, I'm going to say no to. The community will look at and say, yeah, this person needs that higher level of supervision. Let's have them come to you. It works out well. One of the things to keep in mind that clients, when they come to us, if they get repressed from the program, 90% of them are going to DOC, Department Corrections. We have a lot of teeth hanging over there. When I look back when I was a PO, if I filed a revocation, they're more likely going to get revoked, stated, jail time. But there wasn't a lot of teeth. Community corrections, there was a lot of teeth over there. Each client in the program has a case manager, a case manager weekly. Case managers will go over from busking to treatment, to planning what their life's going to be like after they leave the program. There's a lot of things that they go over, but we don't have time to go through them here and go through. One of the things that we also do is treatment. That's really helped us success numbers here locally. Sarah will talk more about that here in a little bit. Going back to, if you think about prior to being here, and one thing we want to drive this home, that clients would go out, say Colorado Springs Common Core Program, and then would come back here and would struggle. We would then do that recycling door over and over again. By having us here, we're able to have them in the program, have them in the community. We work on stabilization factors, our job, employment, treatment. It's really big that once they leave our program, that they leave and that they're stable, they have that job, they're engaged, treatment, a lot of them will continue with treatment, they will continue to contact. So I have stories, tons of stories of clients after leaving the program, coming back to the, coming in weekly, checking with staff and seeing how they're doing. We've got clients come in and say, hey, I'm struggling, I need some help. Okay, let's go here and get you that help later. Another thing that's unique with community corrections is that we get audited by the state. So the state oversees this, it's called the Division of Criminal Justice. They oversee all community correction programs in the state. And so we get audited by the state of Colorado. So we have, the last time I counted, those 112 standards that we have to comply with. Those are from number of ways clients take, headcount, walkthroughs, on and on and on. And so they come out every three to four years and do an audit on us. So that's the little standards they open up, performance-based contracting. We recently hit that first mark, and so every year there's a different handout that we have to do. Working through that program, that needed process, but we've been successful out of here locally and we've tested that whole. On that note, I'm going to turn this over to Sarah to talk about treatment.
Morning, Council. My name is Sarah Stangby, and I am the political director for Advantage Treatment Centers. I oversee the statewide operations of Advantage. For those of you who don't know, we do have seven sites in the state of Colorado, ranging from traditional comps to IRT beds, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But it's important for you all to notice that we have a very unique approach for addressing and reaching crime and youth reduction goals for the state of Colorado, and most specifically Montrose. Each and every offender who is sentenced or comes through the wards of Advantage Treatment Center will receive a biopsychosocial assessment. What that does is allows us to uniquely address the needs of that individual. Sometimes it turns out that they need a higher level of care than we provide in Montrose. In that case, we have partnerships with other sites, and they're sent for a 90-day intensive residential treatment program. This is funded solely through the state. Many of the offenders that we treat in Montrose will attend these residential services and come back and do what's the remainder of their sentence in Montrose. Here, we're able to strategically match clients with offense-based care, who we call often specific treatment, include DUIs, D second contacts, sex and men management. Additionally, here in Montrose alone, we have 24 groups weekly meeting, as well as individual therapy. Each and every one of our clinical staffs receive additional training in terms of agentic needs factors. So not only are we addressing behavioral health and substance use care, we're addressing more criminal thinking and patterns. We also are inside jails. Most specifically here in Montrose, we operate the jail-based behavioral treatment services, which allows us to expedite, address, and identify offenders. You'll notice in your packet here, although we created this for the Juvenile Committee, it has some really great information. Our average client success rate is on there. For Montrose, it's 14% higher than the state average, which is a testament to not only this community, our great screening committee, and the support we have of our board members and community partners. Another great initiative that we have is we have dispensed. We are a statewide distributor for Narcan. We distribute over 34,000 doses of this lifesaving medication throughout state, meaning inside Montrose. Additionally, we have peer service hours and peer specials that we employ here in Montrose. We've partnered with the state for the equal student enrollment payment, where people in Montrose who work for us are able to receive up to 60,000 to 90,000, depending on their academic achievements, or student loans. Advantage Treatment Center is not only addressing offender needs, we're also helping the community. You'll notice down there also there's really great pictures, most notably my son. We were able to sponsor a lot of community events. We really pride ourselves on our partnerships of being a key component of the criminal needs of our community. So I hope today you've learned a little bit more about Advantage and what we do, and definitely welcome you all to come stop by and hang out with us. I think we probably have a few more minutes. Does anyone have any specific questions on what we do and how we do it?
Any questions for Council? One of the things that I would like to highlight is the distribution of Narcan and kind of that coordinated partnership with some of the opioid abatement groups and the Colorado Opioid Abatement Council. And one of the things that we really want to highlight is the availability of that program, and that it is, right now, because of the opioid epidemic, that is, I think, one of the most impactful things that the group does, and I want to thank you personally for that.
Yes, we do. We've partnered with, there's a lot of local groups that meet, one comes from the line of the Commodore Recovered Connections that meets, as well as the Southwest Opioid Council we're referring to. Our Narcan is with the Colorado Department of Public Health Environment, we are at the full fund. So if anybody needs Narcan, Tyson has 17 boxes in his office currently.
So that's a great contact one, that if someone has a desire to have Narcan in the facility, that they could contact you guys and arrange for that.
If you have any ideas, we're pretty proactive about getting into the schools, hospitals, doctors' offices. Unfortunately, because of some regulations, it's easier for us to receive Narcan than it can be from other agencies. We're happy to receive it and then.
Excellent.
You might speak a little bit too about your baseball or softball program, how it's bringing your folks together.
Yes, the key chairs. We, every year, have, our clients are able, depending on their progress in program and their compliance with the rules, they're able to participate in recreational sports. We believe that reinforcing pro-social activities like that is a important component of reintegration. I think we have some really good stories about the game changers playing the Sheriff's Office. That's always one of the best games, so we can enjoy them next year.
Anything else from Council or staff? Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next item, is the Black Canyon Golf Course Boundary Line Adjustment, and this is our Planning Manager Jay Stockwell and City Attorney Ben Morris.
I'll just start, good morning, Council. We're going to try to get this hooked up. If it doesn't work for some reason, I can actually just go over, when you all have the packet, the presentation I've got with the illustrations, so definitely it's a much easier to see, quite frankly, in front of you. And I have a reservation.
So good. One is a modern technology.
Well, hopefully all works here, but it'll be pretty brief regardless, so. What we've got, I'll just provide just kind of a quick overview of really what we're looking at here, and truthfully, I can let our City Attorney Ben Morris tonight as well. But what we're looking at is James Renfro owns that property with a star on it. That address is 2400 Columbine Lane, and it's adjacent, it can see just directly to the northern Black Canyon Golf Course. Mr. Renfro approached the city probably about a year ago regarding the acquisition of just a small piece of property to the south of his property there. It's fairly unmaintained, it's undeveloped, but adjacent to the city golf course and his property that he ultimately just wanted to incorporate into his parcel so he could maintain it and have it look a little bit nicer. So he approached the city, and there was a lot of discussions. This is where my colleagues can probably chime in, this is what those past discussions looked like before my time, but ultimately, this is really what his end goal was to do when he approached the city. As you can see in the red, that's the parcel that Mr. Renfro owns, and the area in the blue, that's actually what the city owns, part of the golf course, that is proposed to acquire from the city essentially to maintain. As you can see, it's really true, it's not maintained by golf course staffs, not utilized for any holes or anything like that, and I think from a city staff standpoint, it seems to be a big deal to, quite frankly, let that piece of property go. It reduces our maintenance burden and, quite frankly, allows us for a maintainable problem to have that little bit extra credit that does. The overall area of that area in blue is .62 acres. In the next couple of slides, I'll show you what it looks like, but it's not a separate lot. It's not creating a separate buildable lot here. It's just consolidating that piece of that parcel. This is what it would look like essentially at the end as one sequel parcel. So as you can see, it's just an acquisition of that southern piece that is city-owned, but again, not maintained. It's kind of, you can see that, the southern piece. The contract is in the packet, it all has proposed, so what that reflects is, and Ben has drafted that, is total cost would be $25,000. It's a pretty straightforward transaction, generally speaking. If there's any questions, Ben, answer those. And then last but not least, is just the boundary adjustment platform. So, you know, from the planning realm, we fly these on a daily and weekly basis, but I just actually presented probably about a month and a half ago. This has been my staff viewed, and it's actually essentially been conditionally approved at this point, pending obviously the contract and the acquisition of the property, which would have to be approved by Council. So that is really the reason we're moving in front of you today, and if you all decide to kind of proceed with this, you will see this come to city council meetings, as any city-owned property that's essentially dissolved or sold, has to be approved manually. But that's really kind of just a quick gist of what's going on here. I'm happy to answer any questions, and sure, my colleagues, I'm happy to be the same.
Can you talk more about our process for appraising or not appraising property, and the relative, you know, at a certain point, the appraisal's got to cost more than the information it gives us. Can you talk a little bit about that generally?
I can speak from a personal standpoint, I'll let my colleagues chime in, but I was formerly a commercial real estate appraiser. I know those pieces can be exorbitant for properties generally, and we put them up for $5,000, $5,000 sometimes. In this case, I don't have the exact history of why it wasn't appraised, but again, it's being consolidated here, it's probably a separate buildable lot, and it probably just seemed like 22 grades. Yeah, I can worry about my colleagues. So with a lot of our small pieces of property that we'll vacate or transfer, or even when we're out looking at acquiring a property, if you've been looking for property for the new facility, rather than get a formal appraisal, we'll look at comparable sort of community and similar transactions, and to save money on the appraisal on something smaller, is just take all of that into account and come up with a big, big, we think, reasonable and justifiable. In this case, all of our searching for properties for the public works facility, ag land out around our community is about 24, a little over 24,000 an acre, or this flat ag land. This one's unique, it's a kind of ag land because it's a big weed patch, not being used for any kind of buildable purpose. Doesn't really have any purpose for the golf course itself. We have golf course employees here today who can answer questions about that on the first side, but we went out, several groups of us, several different times, just to make sure this area was something that wouldn't be of any value to us as like any golf course in the future for expansion, relocating holes. It's right on the north side of that pond, it's weed patch, and we're leaving, you can see on the map, the little access rail for our purposes is still on our property. So it's everything to the north of that. Jim really approached us at the very beginning because he asked if he could plant grass and maintain it and mow it as a lawn, so it looks nicer to him to back here. And then he said, well, there's liability issues with you maintaining our property, and that's really what started it. And he said, oh, I'll just buy it from you. So that's how this all started. The value of 25,000, we get 20, 24 something, this is .6 acres, it's not necessarily bacon ag, but it's also not accessible or really buildable for us for any purposes, and so that's how he came up with our reasonable 25,000. Talked to him about that, both sides seemed comfortable. Could do a formal appraisal, we would spend a thousand, a few thousand dollars or something, which are 25 down on the net value to the city. Of course, we'll do that if Council gives us that direction, but based on past practice that we have.
If I'm not mistaken, that is the property that Mr. Renfro previously owned, but conveyed to the city for the back nine of the golf courses.
Yeah, in fact, he conveyed a lot to the city back then, a lot of it in the form of a donation, actually, with no charge. So it's taking back some of the property that he had originally. And we actually said that, we said, so you want to pay us the property that you gave us? And he said, sure, I think it's the fair thing to do, so.
Something you keep mentioning, you guys keep mentioning, and I want to highlight, is that buildable property. If he acquires this land, can he then survive and build anything on the remainder of that property?
I think it's a good question, because in theory, you could, and by acquiring this piece, I guess that does escape the fact that the people that live in that area, again, to Bill's point, what we're looking at here is if he were to solely separate this area and blew out as a separate lot, we're looking at some really major access issues, no direct access, obviously, to a runway, so lots of significant issues, easements and otherwise. So it's, it would be incredibly difficult to essentially do any parcelling of this property, although this is feasible, but it's not as feasible today.
Based on location of the current house and the gain access point off of city street, would create enormous hurdles for him to try to subdivide the property.
It would, yeah, yeah, no doubt about that. I think, again, you'd be kind of littering the property with easements if it did that, or if the case, that's not anything that the Renfros have objected to as a city standpoint is to subdivide it. And that's not what we're doing here, as shown, it's just going to go on and take your parcel there.
You were very careful to make that clear in the documents, creating any arse. Correct, correct.
I have a question. Okay, this area here, he's going through all the experience of purchasing the property and then maintaining it, and what are the plans for this portion? I mean, it looks to me like this is just as bad as this, and if he's complaining about this, what about this part? That could be.
Somebody might come up to the podium, I think you. On the south side, we're going to keep that for access, because right now, that's our access for our, you come down 10 to get across, and we have some plenty of budget that we're going to irrigate the east side of that property, because that will be, when you play that golf ball, you can actually hit your ball there, and hit that dirt. So we're actually going to turf kind of that set line straight down, and that will maintain a gomber of through between the pond and this property.
I just wanted to find out if we were going to clean it up and maintain that portion where it's left over, if he's going through all the experience and doing all that.
We are, because it, I mean, it benefits him, but it also benefits the office, something we needed to do, and we have the money to take care of that this year, at 5,000 dollars, to irrigate that and get it seeded.
I think it'll make the entire golf course a lot more visually appealing to.
Absolutely, yeah, because it's, you know, lots of people do hit their ball.
I'm not naming names, but. All right, do you have any other questions for Jay? Thank you, appreciate you. And continuing on with golf course questions, our next item is Black Canyon Golf Course Tree Plan. This is Tom Young, Don Sheppard, and Morgan Zier, all who do that. Now, we'd also like to highlight that this is something that does not require Council's approval or activity on or off.
The plan that we provided is just kind of a plan that we have created based on the age of our trees. We started with 22, we're age of the seeds, so we came up with a tier plan to remove the extremes. So on the plan that we provided, it kind of went through, and on the bottom, you can see the, that one color, I know there are different colors, but there's a legend based on here and type, and it matches on the spreadsheet. So for 2022, we've done all the tree planting, we planted 26 trees the last month, and we went ahead and we could give some money in our budget, we removed all of the Russian apples from impact. The other thing we had planned originally was we were going to put pine trees on the front this year, based on the discussions with Hill Press. We have now moved that into the spring of 2023, and we have, we are going to plant 12 20-foot trees. So that's a little bit of a change from our original thinking. So that's a little bit of a change from our original thinking. And we're just going to place those based on where we feel like it'll protect the Russian oaks especially. So like I say, it's a healthier plan and it's based on all the removals. And then you can see the color type and my type of tree. So we've got it on play from golf and it's going to enhance the playability. Lot of the willows, sorry, on tree, those willows, those roots come up and you get knots on them. So we're planting trees with the types of trees. Dan, Dan. Dan also was involved. So the pines will go until after new growth. So once new growth starts, we'll go ahead and plant the big trees. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Okay. Because being a member of Tree City USA, every time we've cut a tree down, we've got to replace it with two, three. And I think that I was looking at this and more trees being cut down and then replanted. And.
So Tree City USA is the two for one. Invasive species don't count because it's free. So that's one issue. Russian oak don't count. You're taking out viable, living tree. And you need to replace that with two living trees. And it's not just on the one property, it's citywide. So we look at all the parks, plantings, all the street inventory and the golf courses. We need to comply with that exactly. But invasive species doesn't. And diseased, diseased and dying species don't. It's basically if you're going to tear down a healthy tree, nobody wants you to do that. Especially the Arbor Day Foundation created Tree City USA. So for construction purposes or development, you're taking out viable trees, you need to replace one with two viable trees.
And is that just specific to the city? Or say a developer goes in and does that, are they required to? Is that saying?
So it's supposed to be outlined in your city's urban forestry ordinance, which will be when we get our tree advisory board put together here soon, in the next couple of months, we'll be talking about updating our, our ordinance and our urban forestry plan. But it generally applies to everyone in your community, although it depends on what our specific planning rules and guidelines are for developers.
But dead or dying trees, when you cut those down, they don't count?
Well, that's a public safety, you're eliminating public safety hazard or you're, unfortunately, utility companies go in and top trees, which make the trees unhealthy and cause them to be dying, not just ugly, but they're actually unhealthy. And so a lot of the work you see around town where the utility lines are going in, those plantings should have been done in a fashion order. They were types of trees that wouldn't throw in the lines or they put lines in after the fact. So we have to battle that.
Because we did lose trees to the power company on three of the willows. And if you look, if you ever looked across the golf course, from Hillcrest to the pond station, we have some cotton wood that's cut in half and we actually lost a pine tree because it was, it was into the, into the wire. So we've lost a lot of trees that the power company had cut them down while we were in there.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Maybe just one more note about why we're bringing this to you is as you, as council looks at budgets for coming years, you'll see money proposed for the Black Canyon Golf Course and for planting trees. This is the plan and thanks to the team for putting this together so that we have an idea of what we're doing every year as we work on this project. And Dan Keane was very helpful, as was Allison Dahl up in GIS. She helped us make this presentation.
I'd also like to point out that this is being responsive to citizen concerns and comments about safety and that the tree plan reflects the desire of the golf course to provide some ball protection for houses as much as can in an affordable, organic manner. But I think it's truly, really beneficial for our community. It also makes us look nice. We're using pines to grow like Christmas trees and kind of tech tech. The way it's going to go into trees. We're doing it in a thoughtful and planned out manner and I appreciate that.
Whether it's trees or snow removal, it's always nice to see there is a plan that's not just.
Really, really.
Yep, yep. Not just for us, but I think the community. I think they feel good. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Very good, appreciate it. Thanks, guys. All right, moving on to equipment purchase recommendations, Public Works Minister Jim Shire.
It's council. I've got a few pieces of equipment to review with you today that are requesting authorization. So all four types of equipment totaled up to just over 1.7 million. I'll explain each of them because they're all budgeted differently. Trying to group them together so it doesn't create quite a long agenda. So all of the purchases we're talking about today are in the 2020 budget. The replacements are within the fleet budget. Anything new or additional to the budget that's, that's mine. Couple examples in each. So I'll start off with the dump trucks. We had a total of four dump trucks we purchased this year. Two of them are completely outfitted with plows and sanders. One of them has a plow only because we actually have a new sander which is last year. And one of them doesn't have a plow or a sander. So we issued an RFP for this with specs that match our needs for the truck, but are open to different brands. We did receive four bids, but from two different manufacturers with different options. And ended up that TransWest dealer with the OJ Watson body, that's the dump body and sander and plow would be through OJ Watson. Anyway, that ended up being the selected option through several different categories, one of them being V-time. So that's something we, we have to consider much more now than I think we have in the past is when will we get these trucks? So there are a total of four, two that were budgeted in 23, or yeah, two in 23 and two in 22. And so we're recommending we purchase four of these together. So moving on to the asphalt recycler, this, we spoke about it a buddy time, this is the machine that will be able to use our asphalt millings and make small batch of asphalt to mostly, could be used for small patches, but brings us the ability to create hot asphalt year round, which will definitely help our puddle repair.
Does that mean your, that potholes will get replaced with a more permanent materials even in the winter?
Yep. Yeah, much better than cold patches what we use now, obviously because the hot ones aren't much. So this is, it reuses our asphalt millings, which are a byproduct from our large street projects. And also like a rejuvenator, acid oil goes into it and then it is actually a hot, hot asphalt that comes out of this. It's a real small batch though, it's in small quantities, but could be used year round. Definitely think small patches are, are something I see us using it as when we, you know, we can't get, or it's very difficult to get a small load of asphalt. Like we can't go get, you know, one ton. But we can, we can make it ourselves, we can do small patches this year round, but probably see it most in the wintertime raising for pothole repair. So just a, a new piece of equipment that we're pretty excited to bring out.
And this, because it's not only recycling the existing product that we're having to store, but because a small batch is also a less economic impact than a full sized asphalt batch.
Yeah, and just easier for operations when it comes to needing to do a single patch or puddle rather than again buying a, scheduling and trying to buy a full truckload or multiple truckloads. So as far as procurement goes, this was actually able to utilize a cooperative purchasing agreement, which allows us to use government pricing on previously awarded contracts, which just assures that we are getting great pricing, government pricing for this purchase. So Disco is a company we've used for many items, which is related to street repairs or street asphalt. And so we are recommending using a cooperative purchasing agreement through Disco for this piece of equipment.
When do you think you'll get it?
It's actually not as long, I want to say it was about three months, that's close. It wasn't nearly as long as I thought. Some things are available, which is great. So moving on to the police department armored vehicle. This is a replacement and is budgeted in the fleet budget for this. And also similar to the asphalt recycler, utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement to ensure government pricing again. And in this case, it's using a four chassis, which we've attempted to, you know, standardize our fleet into a four chassis. And this, this vehicle utilizes a Ford 550, I believe, chassis. We did budget 400 for this replacement within the fleet budget or fleet fund, which we are slightly over that, 4.25. And that's due to the timing of getting our original pricing and then just accessories that are coming on the vehicle caused it to go over what was budgeted. But actually, the fleet fund had collected 534,000 for this vehicle. And so although it was overly budgeted, it is under what the fleet fund had collected for it. So we're, basically we're not saving as much as we thought, but we're still saving a significant amount on this, this purchase in the fleet fund.
Just out of curiosity, how many times have we used this, the old one? We have an old one here in town just for buying.
Sure, yeah, no, we, and I could, I brought Tim here in case I misrepresent the numbers. But we don't use it often because it is part of our SWAT team. But it's very similar to any other piece of equipment. Maybe that Public Works has something that's not used often, but when you need it, you need it. And that's just to keep our officers.
I was just curious if there was some kind of numbers that.
I would say probably within the last year, we've probably used it five or six times. So I'd kind of like to see that number actually go down just a little bit. We haven't liked to never have to use it, but.
I agree, but you know, if, if we need it for officer's safety, it's important that we have it.
How does this compare to our current armored vehicle? Size and utility and stuff?
So, good question.
I see Commander Cox was getting ready to stand up.
No, I, and once again, Tim can jump in here too. So this is actually made for civilian law enforcement. So the back end of it is, is, is able to see quite a few more police officers than the MRAP that we currently have. Not unlike the body camera situation, we were reading the tea leaves and saw this coming. There was an executive order here in the summer that severely limited our use of the MRAP, which is a, is a, it's a military mind resistant vehicle. It's served us very well over the last 10 years, but with, and I would agree, I think, with the militarization of police departments. I think that it's, it's served its purpose. It's not necessarily in the back of it really designed to carry a lot of officers. And it has a lot of sharp edges in the back, which is kind of interesting in the deployment from how the back of it is probably not as efficient as it could be. The MRAP, the Bearcat that we're requesting also won't be painted flat dark earth or sand, it'll be black. And so I think there's just a community perception that I'd like to make sure we stay in front of as well.
So if we acquire the Bearcat, would we be getting rid of the MRAP?
Yes. Yep, so with the recent executive order, both federally and then the state has also, not recently, but within the last few years passed, legislation that's limited, we can actually no longer use the MRAP for two things. One, which we don't do, which is border patrol operations. But number two, if it is a drug operation or drug enforcement operation, we can no longer use a military vehicle. Well, that's a lot of what our team does when it's that heightened level of officer safety because drug dealers often aren't themselves. So for those reasons, the timing is pretty.
If you're looking for a four wheel drive, talk to it.
The gas mileage would probably be prohibitive.
Do you put that on gum deals?
No, so it's through the 1033 program. So we'll, we'll give it back to, I think we got it from a person. And there's a lot of these that are popping up now on, on that 1033 program. And they, they used to be a hot commodity and now they just sit because really there's, there's not much you can use it for anymore. But it was a very useful piece of equipment while, while.
Any other questions?
We don't have to use it too.
Any other questions for council?
I know that it's nice to have a tool when you need it and, or a piece of equipment.
So. I will say one, one real quick final thing, and this has happened, this happened recently. We, we also are a regional team with the sheriff's office that were providing. And we went to county residents here within the last month. And the individual was not going to un-barcade himself. And that's often because they arm themselves and then they want to try to cause as much damage as they can. And then we pull up in an armored vehicle and there's just really nothing else for that person to do. And they actually give up. So our stats show it's actually in a strange sort of way, a de-escalation tool. I know that sounds weird and I don't advertise it like that, but there's just nothing for someone to do with that. So they often just come out and give up.
All right, I have one more on here. This is, the last item is a semi truck, we call tractor trailer combination, the semi truck and a lowboy trailer. This is budgeted in several divisions within Public Works because it will be used by basically all of us. One usage for transporting our large equipment, like our excavator or work loader, which we don't currently have a trailer for, we utilize what we have, but this lowboy has actually been for it and would be much, much better for that operation. But also we would utilize it to do our own in-house CDL training, which we do now also, but we don't have a vehicle trailer combination that we can get a CDL for new employees that has no restriction coming. They have to choose either between a manual exemption or a Class B or, or air brake exemptions along their license, which means what they can drive for us on the road. So having a truck trailer like this, we can be able to train and get CDLs for new employees or existing employees with no restrictions. It's a Class A CDL with no restrictions. And then they may be able to drive any combination of vehicle or trailer we have within Public Works. So for many reasons, that one would be needed through lots of divisions. But because of its use, it likely will not be used every day or definitely not for long haul like tractor trailers are typically meant for, we were recommending we purchase this from an auction, which we have done in the past for equipment that fits this type of need where we could get a, a good used tractor trailer and it would work fine for us for many years. So that's what we're recommending here. So we're just asking that we authorize the, the full budget of $200,000 for that purchase and then we will, we will, uh, several large equipment auctions and, and find what fits best and stay under that budget. So with that, there is a summary on the last page of overall budget of where things were budgeted in the fleet fund, where things were budgeted within division budgets. We actually were over our bottom line budget by almost 100,000. Considering the number of equipment and the changes in pricing we've seen recently, that's actually fairly close. Because in the fleet fund, we budget based on inflation over the life of the vehicle. So we basically have to estimate the inflation of what we buy for today and what it's going to cost to replace it in 10 years from now. So that being considered, we were fairly close considering all the changes in the market recently. But most of that change, what is over budgeted is within the fleet fund and that's what the fleet fund is for, that it is meant to absorb some of these, this overage, but that we were. we will recover that over that vehicle's life in the next 10 years. So although it's over, over what was budgeted, the fleet fund is meant to absorb those things and will recoup it over that next vehicle life.
So for example, the purchase of the tractor and low-boy trailer is, is a brand-new piece of equipment, and so now, in addition to buying it, all of those departments that are sharing it are going to pay into the fleet fund, so it will be able to be replaced when it's.
Exactly, yep. And so we will take its purchase amount today, we add an inflation every year for the next, let's call it 10-year life, and then that's what we, as divided up in those budgets to accumulate over 10 years, so 10 years from now, we have a pool that is 200,000 with an inflation applied to it to then replace that vehicle down the road.
What happens to funds that are in the fleet fund for replacement of a vehicle when we decide we don't need that kind of equipment anymore, but we've saved up for it for?
Yeah, that actually happens quite a bit, so I would say most often I see that with trailers, so we may have a trailer that we've had for 20 years, and it's being replaced, but we don't utilize that trailer. Instead, we may utilize something else, we may need a different type of equipment or a different type of trailer even, we can utilize that, so we may sell this trailer, but instead buy a trailer with a different rack on it or something else. So when it's up for replacement, that's when we really consider, is this being utilized fully, or could it be better utilized as something else? If the fund has collected this replacement, is it not needed at all, maybe we don't replace it at all, or if it could be changed in something that is more useful. And so a lot of times we do that, if it's an upgrade, though, that's when the divisions will pay the difference. So if it's a much larger trailer that we replace it with or something, then the difference will be paid out of divisions.
And that, that different piece of equipment that that money is used for benefits the same division, because it's the divisions that are paying into the fleet fund, so you wouldn't have one division paying in, and then another division ultimately using their account.
That's correct, yeah, no, yeah, division to division, so if it's a Parks trailer, for example, then we would, we would consider what Parks may need of that trailer before it's replaced. We wouldn't want to replace something that doesn't get used.
Right.
That's just like.
Thanks.
So that's it, if there's any questions, if you have a good answer, otherwise.
Thanks, appreciate you. All right, moving on to general city council discussion. Is there anything you guys have? Anything from staff? Yes, sir?
January 5th, 4:00 PM here at the police department, Dennis Berry, Officer Dennis Berry, who's our square resource officer, is retiring after 43 years in law enforcement, and so I think there'll be some type of a city council email or city hall email output, I just want to invite you guys to.
It's the 5th?
The 5th.
January 5th. So that'd be this Friday?
I just, for you know, I noticed that there was a notice from you about crosswalks, the safety of the crosswalks, and I just had a conversation with the street manager that they're planning on looking at different ways to make it more, the signs more visible, and, because I was driving by and recommended that we just cut the trees around, but they were saying that some of the businesses don't particularly like cutting the trees out, and I was thinking about public safety rather than business aesthetic, so anyway, they have a plan, at least my understanding, they have a plan to look at that, so I thought I'd let you know, I don't know if you had any conversations with Jim, but.
A brief one, I just got back from two weeks of vacation, so I'm kind of digging out through all my stuff, but. And we, just to let everybody know, we plan on continuing those operations into January, probably our next operation won't be East Main Street, but some other complaint areas. The East Main Street operation actually was based on several complaints, so that's what.
I have a question, it's concerning turn signals in the roundabouts. I noticed that nobody in the roundabout that I've been on, with the exception of myself, that use their turn signals, and sometimes it just seems like, I've seen several accidents over there on Hillcrest and Sunnyside, and I was just curious as to, I thought I read someplace that it wasn't required.
That's correct, so that was actually a Grand Junction Police Department case here, probably about a year and a half ago, that went all the way up to, I think it was the Colorado Supreme Court, and Judge Morris may be able to chime in on that, but it was actually ruled that you do not have to use your turn signal inside a roundabout, so it's no longer required and it's no longer probable cause for us to contact a person.
The logic behind that was, everybody's turning right.
Well, and I think it was the speed of the, of, you know, by the time you activate your turn signal and things like that, then you're out. Having said that, I, I'm in the same boat you are, as far as, you know, it'd be nice to have some indication, but at the end of the day, they're so close anyway, that you wouldn't want to pull out in front of somebody because you could get sacked.
Just based on a turn signal, no way.
But as far as it's from an enforcement side, it's not, it's not something that we can contact.
Okay, I just wanted a little clarification, I thought I read that.
You're correct.
Maybe just as a courtesy that you might consider using your turn signal.
Force of habit, I signal coming up to the roundabout, force of habit.
Nobody knows where you're going.
No, they know well in advance, but they have to be able to see me, so.
You are using the right terms.
Depends on which way I'm going. All right, if there's no other staff comments, we could get off on that tangent really far, okay? All right, thanks, everybody, and we will see everybody back here tonight, our regular city council meeting is tonight in this facility at 6 o'clock, and we hope to see everybody here. Thank you.